Well, now convene the Minter and Town Council meeting Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's do a roll call.
Peter, Dan Air.
Gusty here, Brian here.
Terry here.
And Earl is here. With that, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there anyone that needs to call in or wants to request a calling of anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Gusty, second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next, we have the approval of a regular. Any modifications, deletions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
A motion by Kate and a second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Is there anyone that has a need to declare a conflict of interest on any item of the agenda? Hearing none. Do public comment. There's any citizens out there that would like to address the board on any issues that you have? This, as long as it's not on the agenda, we'll pull in, okay? Mike, go ahead.
I do have one. Excuse me, do you have somebody down there?
Okay. Well, yeah, hang on, Jay. Something and then Sarah can come on.
I just like take a brief minute and talk about something. I give everybody a little copy so you can check it out later whenever you have time. Like Earl.
Handouts.
The handouts. And all right. Thank you.
Okay. You got five minutes, Mike.
Now I need to.
Good.
Write it down, so. My name is Michael Boyd. I live at five oh two and a half Eagle Street in Minter. I came here tonight to comment on the new building amendment to the chapter nineteen code changes being proposed by the HPC meeting last night. First, I would like to thank everybody that created the HPC committee to help preserve this town we all live in and love and creating ordinance number ten dash twenty-two for chapter nineteen. My concern is that this new ordinance amendment is being done with broad strokes and changing setbacks in the building code, completely bypassing the planning commission. When I inquired at a planning commission meeting about this, I was told that it did not concern us at the planning commission because the HPC was their own committee. So as a citizen loves this town, I'm here to ask you all to please look at the existing chapter nineteen code, then look at the amendment and how it applies, its original intent, and then recommend inventory of eligibility being done first, section nineteen dash two dash eighty of the existing ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-two, also determining if it applies just buildings already designated or if it applies to article nine of the existing ordinance, as well as looking at gray areas that might need amending and decide if code changes that usually would require variance or change existing building code goes to the planning commission first before adding this new amendment ordinance TBD series two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you for your time. That's the sweetest.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your concern.
You guys have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sarah Smith Heims coming in remotely. Sarah, can you hear us?
Sarah, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
Barely.
Oh, barely, huh?
That's that's better now.
That's better, okay.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, hi, thanks for giving me a chance. I wanted to explain the process, the, I decided to run for Eagle County Commissioner for Kathy Chandler Henry's district two seat. Matt Shear, you guys are actually in district one. Matt Shear is your, is your commissioner. He is running again. But I, when I started this process, I was flummoxed by how complicated it is. And so I'm trying to just explain to everybody how this process works in case you want to participate. So the way it works is for the Democratic Party, the primary, the primary for the Republican and the Democratic Party is on June twenty-fifth. It's a mail-in ballot. I am running as a Democrat. And two other people are also running for that same seat as Democrats. So in order to get on the primary ballot for the Democrats, and I think the process is the same for the Republicans, you have to get, well, we have to get seven hundred and thirty-seven signatures on a petition or you have to, when you go to the caucus and assembly on March ninth and you have to get thirty percent of the votes cast of the delegates at the caucus, but you have no idea how many people are going to caucus. So that's kind of, that's kind of a crap. That's kind of risky. The, even though I'm running for district two and Minter is in district one, everyone votes for everyone. It's an at-large election. So in other words, the candidates for district one have to live in district one, candidates in district two have to live in district two, but everybody in Eagle County can vote both, can sign petitions, can vote in the primary and can vote in the general regardless of whether, for all of the candidates for that are up. So it's confusing. So the petitions, we are allowed to start collecting signatures as of yesterday, Tuesday, and we can collect signatures until March nineteenth. You can only sign one petition for each seat. So in other words, if you chose to sign a petition for the district two seat, you can only sign for one of the three of us who are running. I don't think Matt's, I think, I don't know if Matt's going to do signatures or caucus. I don't think he's being challenged. I don't know, but I don't think he is. But anyway, I just wanted everybody to understand, oh, the other thing is, the reason it's kind of important to understand how this works is a Democrat has won those commissioner seats for like the last twenty-three years. So if you actually want to have any choice about who will likely end up being a commissioner, you kind of have to get those names on the primary ballot. And so it's, it's good to participate in the process. You can only sign a democratic petition or caucus for the Dems if you are a registered Democrat. Fifty-three percent of the voters in Eagle County are unaffiliated. So, but it's very easy to change your affiliation if you, if you did want to change your affiliation to be able to participate, and then you can always change it back. So that's my little primer on how, you know, how it works to run for Eagle County Commissioner. My son Will lives on Main Street. If anybody is interested in signing a petition or talking to me and figuring out whether they would like me to be on the primary ballot, I would be happy to, to, you know, meet with you or talk to you, but just a little primer. If my, I have a website, it's sarahforeaglecounty.org. Thanks for your time.
Sarah, thank you very much. It sounds like you're going to be really busy the next few months, huh?
Too bad I have a few jobs, but that's okay. All right. Bye.
Okay, good, good luck and we'll see you in the election time. Well, I'll see you early, obviously, but anyway, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody else that would like to make any public comment? Anybody else online, Jay?
No, there's nobody else online with their hand raised.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is council comments and committee reports. Kate, you got anything? Lynn?
I don't have anything either. I just have a council comment and a citizen comment. Our public works is out there crushing, busting their butts. I mean, they are amazing. I, I was sick last week and I kind of felt like I went out one day and it was like, there was so much snow on the roads and the next morning it was gone. So they are just working hard. So just wanted to give kudos to Arnold and the peeps.
Yeah.
We don't have any women. I wanted to say the guys, but.
You can apply for public works. But yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Arnold and Isaiah and Mike and Micah are just going crazy, but at least we have four now for free with part-time. No, Mike is not on the, well, I thought he was doing some part-time stuff. Oh, okay. Well, we have three, so we're still short in it. But anyway, I, they've been, they've been working hard and they're going to be out there early in the morning tomorrow. And I just want to reiterate that if you want to clear your sidewalks and you don't have a place to put it, but on the street, you have to get it completed by eight o'clock.
You have to do it between the hours of four AM and seven AM.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
On town home roads.
Yes, after seven AM, they may, basically the idea is you need to get it out there, sidewalk only, not driveways before they come by, cause otherwise if you do it after they've already passed, then they have to take another trip around just to get that up. So it doesn't turn into smell, into ice and stuff. So please be considerate of their time because they need every bit of it. Uh, let's see, okay. Next is our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My town manager report is in the packet. There are a few updates to the report from December the twentieth. I do want to hit on the Minter tank operations update because I will be coming back with the water team February seventh to discuss that plan for moving forward with the potential lining of the steel bolted tank option. So I'll be coming back with Jared Limkey and Jeff Spinel and John Volk to discuss that option with all of council and, and see if we can't find a path forward there. You know, the original plan from council was to have two operational water tanks. Because of the costs involved with those, we ended up having to go down to one. And I think through a very long journey, we might have found a way to have two operational tanks again. So fingers crossed, we'll be bringing that full discussion to council on February seventh. Additionally, if there are no questions to any matters on the packet items, I just want to provide an update that we, it's a election year for the Minter Town Council, which means it's also a community survey year. This is exciting.
It is.
Hearing from the community is a big part of what we do. And the community survey is highly valuable, but not only to the council for how the strategic plan comes together, but also to the staff when we are putting together our grant applications. So we're going to be putting the community survey together. If there are any council members who would like to be involved in a little bit more of the weeds of this process, I can take a couple of council members who, you know, might be interested right now.
I will.
I will too.
Brian, you're not, for some reason.
Yeah, what like to?
What kind of questions do we want to ask of our community? What kind of feedback would we like to see? Of course, you know, we've been doing the community survey for years now, so there's some baseline questions we want to continue to ask so that we can build on that data year over year. But then, you know, there are new questions that we might want to understand further about growth or water or trails and wildlife or, you know, such a wide variety of things, you know, streets and safety. You pick it. But so if there are, you know, if there's interest, I know Earl and Lynn chimed in, but if there's others, I'll, I'll let you all vet it out.
That'd be interesting too. I'm just worried about election time if, you know, we got that coming two months now. If we're in the middle of it, you don't get reelected. I guess it was that concern.
Well, the beauty is that the survey should be completed before elections. So what I might do then is if Earl and Lynn, you know, raise their hands, maybe what I'll do is I'll send out an email to get, you know, feedback from all of you. And then Earl and Lynn can help weed through it all.
Sounds like a plan.
And we're available individually to talk to each one of you. Those people have concerns about.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we did not get any takers for the town prosecutor RFP. So we are sticking with our current town prosecutor. And I think this process has actually been a great initiator of conversations that needed to take place to make some improvements. So this could end up being a good thing. So we'll see how that goes. I am in the middle of updating the employee handbook with the help of employers council who council approved that we work with this last summer. Our employee handbook is, I think, just over twenty-five years old. So there's quite a bit of redlining, as you can imagine. I'll be bringing that forward at an upcoming council meeting for council to approve. Late March, early April, we will be starting the congressional earmark funding process. So I'll be bringing forward three to four options for council to consider for you all to apply for two thousand and twenty-five congressional earmarks. So we'll get going on that pretty, pretty quickly here, just as a heads up, start thinking about different funding pockets of funding that we might want to be utilizing. Some require, you know, a percentage matching and some do not. Um, we, Earl and I have started scheduling the council retreat, which has to be done pretty early for organizing the facilitator. That will occur late April, early May, just so everyone can keep that on their radar. It is one of the best days a council could possibly imagine. It is a day full of fun and enjoyment, creating and modifying and amending the strategic plan to give your staff and public direction for the next two years on what you'd like to see happen. So we always do that after an election and we're looking forward to getting that off and running. That has been budgeted for that to occur and the community survey is also already budgeted to occur. I also, this has kind of been out there. So I did a little diving into this. The smart meter program, some of you have access, some of you do not. This is a point of contention now in town. So I've done some digging, sixty-seven residents in town have access, the rest do not. So naturally there's some inequity here. Thank you, Earl.
Just insurance.
Uh, ERWSD doesn't have a definitive reason as to why sixty-seven have it and the rest do not, except that they suspect many of the residents that have it may also have accounts outside of Minter.
I do not.
I don't either.
So again.
Which is lucky.
Right. So these accounts that are currently out there, they will not be built upon. They don't expect more people to be able to get them. I am continuing to try to find ways that I can find money in the enterprise fund to be able to get the forty-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars so that we can get the data off of these smart meters. We essentially have smart water meters installed through all of town, except for, I think we're down to the last ten units right now. So we have a system that's essentially a Ferrari that we're not letting out of the driveway to get the data we could get.
Does it have anything to do with maybe like the radio signal? Different, you know, the ones that's having it is actually bouncing off of their tower? Because when they hooked mine up, they said, oh, you got a strong reading, you know, you must be picking up off the tower at Dow.
Possibly because.
Have anything to do with it?
They did say that to, to get the full spectrum of the program, we would have to be upgrading the AMI, the advanced metering infrastructure, which would be part of the radio system. So you might be already on a, you know, the Dow. We also added a radio to tank two, I think, as you knew. So, you know, you might be jumping off of that one instead of whatever we've got on tank two that does not include, you know, some of the smart meter stuff. So just so you all know, I'm going to be working really hard to find forty-three thousand dollars in our budget to come back and ask for an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-four budget to get approval for the smart meter program so that we can start using that data and offering this program to our residents. We're down to the last ten and it's, it's a really great opportunity to, to start using data to our advantage.
Can you, can staff pull that data right now? Just customers can't see it? So nobody can see that data?
You know, we have to. Sixty-seven customers have, they said it was limited data. So I guess what some of the folks that have access, they can see it, but I guess it's not the full suite of data that would be available if we were signed up for the entire program.
It would be hard to have a tier grade discussion without having an admin or somebody pulling.
Data. Of systems and yes, so this is, I mean, we, we went through the process of getting these really smart water meters. It'd be great to use them.
Could you give a quick detail on what citizens app would do for them?
Sure. And, you know, I don't want to pick on anybody that has this already available to them, but I, I don't have it as an example. So it's my understanding that you can set up monitoring of your water use so that if you use over a certain amount of gallons in a day, it will notify you. If you, if they suspect a leak, it will just send you an alarm to notify you. And I, and there's quite a few other options as well for the citizen side of it. There's also options for the backend staff side to see greater system-wide leak issues, you know, as, as a whole. So I think there's quite a few that's to not only the individual users, but also the utility owners in Minter.
I get an email, Earl. And when I see my usage that's average for that time of year or and it compares data from years past, it's kind of cool. But it says, oh, you've used a lot of water today. What's going on, you know? So then I can, then I can really get right on it.
Yeah. And for a town that is, you know, bumping up against consumptive use limitations at certain months of the year, it could be really helpful.
Okay, go ahead.
Lastly, I had a really great opportunity to talk to James Dilzel of Eagle River Watershed Council about the beyond yard, beyond lawn program. So this is turf replacement program and it's all about different steps involved in water conservation. So, you know, first step is, you know, to have an assessment of your lawn and then have a review of your irrigation system. And then they come in and, you know, tell you what rebates you might be available for. And then, you know, someone comes in and does the switch out. And what they do is your yard ends up, instead of looking like, you know, a Kentucky bluegrass, it looks more like a native meadow is what I was told. So it sounds lovely. So we're going to continue those discussions as part of our climate action collaborative membership. We are working through different ways that we can be continuing to save water, which will help with our consumptive use limitations, given that all of our water savings comes through outdoor use. So we will be coming forward to you all with some steps that we'll be looking to take to improve those measures on the backend. Sorry, that was so long-winded.
I do have a question from something I need.
Yes.
The security fence, is it a wildlife fence? Is it, is it going to look like the wildlife fences? This is for our tank two. What is it going to be like? Just want to make sure.
So this is a security fence that will be at what is now called tank three.
Tank three.
The, the concrete tank. And what this will essentially be is this is not a security fence to keep out wildlife. We don't feel that wildlife is a threat to our infrastructure. We don't feel that wildlife threatens either the tank or the water treatment plant. We feel that humans threaten the tank or the water treatment plant. So what this will be is a gate going across the road at the town's property line and going approximately, and this is conceptual, approximately, let's say a hundred feet of the hillside. And this is to keep humans out of the water treatment distribution area.
So it's not looping around and.
There will be no looping. So, you know, if someone was really in the mood, they could, you know, walk up and around. But this is to keep, you know, the ninety-nine percent of the people that are legit, just to keep them out. But no, we are purposely not enclosing the fence so that wildlife has full access to and from Cross Creek from the hillside. And that's been approved and discussed for the last three years with Colorado Parks and Wildlife.
Kind of been a little bit started too, hadn't it? Wasn't there some poles kind of stuck up there? Didn't public works start a little on it?
Public Works had ambitions. And then they said, we, we need some help.
Cause I remember when they were doing the line from the wells up there, you know, we've seen the kind of through the poles and stuff, so.
Yeah. So this will be basically a fourth of a fence.
So would surveillance cameras on at the tank and at the water plant make sense?
Yeah, we have ten cameras, I believe, at the plant now.
Okay, good.
I think we do. I'll check with.
We do, yeah.
Pretty sure we do.
Seen them as.
That's all I have.
Really? Okay. No special presentations today?
No.
We're on to business items. Next, we have resolution number two, series two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution fourteen, appointing an interim council member. Jay, did you want to have anything to say on this or shall we just get rolling?
I thought Michelle was going to handle it.
Okay, Michelle, why don't you handle it?
Well, if you want to just get rolling, feel free to do so. I was just going to provide background, which I think, which is in the packet and would be redundant.
Okay, so do we still only have one applicant?
Yes, so I did tell the mayor, the, the deadline for submitting letters of interest was four o'clock last Thursday. However, if anybody else had submitted any letters of interest, we would bring them, you know, staff would bring them forward for council to then consider. Staff has not received any other letters of interest at this time, so we still only have Mr. Gothills.
Okay. So.
There's still.
Does anybody want to ask him any questions before he sits down, before he gets sworn in?
I'd just say thank you, Eric. We appreciate you filling in here.
Welcome back.
So then if, if council is so amenable to Mr. Gothills sitting in as the interim town council member, then it would be preferable to have, we will not be doing the ballots that we all love so much, but a voice motion and a second with a vote to have it confirmed for the record. And then the mayor can stand up and swear Mr. Gothills.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two, series two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution appointing Eric Gothel to town council member. I guess the temporary position.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's the second? Kate, okay. A motion by Gusty, second by Kate. Let's do a roll call.
Kate.
Lynn, aye.
Gusty, aye. Brian, aye.
Terry, aye.
And Earl. All right, with that.
Thank you.
Just ran the whole truth and nothing about the truth.
Are you right? State after me. Aye, aye. Eric Gothel, Eric Guyer. Do you solemnly swear that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States? Do you solemnly swear that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States? The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado? Constitution and the laws of state of Colorado? And the ordinances of the town of Minter? And the ordinance of the town of Minter. And that I will faithfully perform all the duties of the town office of town council member upon which I am about to enter. I'm all faithfully. Faithfully perform all the duties of the office of town council member on which I'm about to enter. You gotta sit down. You didn't want to, you. Okay.
Well, I and his name and you read like three whole sentences.
Okay, well, we'll sign this together or later. Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We are completion.
Probably still have his name back.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was very happy that Eric signed us. Yeah, I was, I was, I was very happy that Eric signed us, uh, sent in a letter of interest because you've been on council before. For three or four years and uh. That's his appointment is gonna uh, just last until the next election. He's all, he's already planning on, I assume, running for election. Um, so um, it's good to have someone that can kinda just get up and run it. Okay. With that. We are on to resolution number three, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Minter. And Eagle River Fire Protection District to support wildland fire mitigation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Chief Carl Bauer with us and the Wildland Fire Mitigation Team. Uh, Hugh and Bear to discuss the annual intergovernmental agreement that Minter participates in. For wildland fire mitigation for the region. This is a regional program whereby. I believe all the municipalities participate. They'll correct me with everything that I say that I. And, and Minter has participated every year. I believe that this program has been uh, up and running. Minter has already budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars toward this program within the twenty twenty-four budget that is approved. Um, and I would love to bring the experts forward to talk about this program uh, and all that it does to help our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, for those of you whom I've not had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Carl Bauer and I have. The honor of serving as the fire chief for Eagle River Fire Protection District. Your fire department. Um, before I begin, I would like to echo your comments about public works. Uh, we know they're out there plowing, working hard, particularly this time of year, given the rumor that it might snow. You know, even with that much snow out there, we'll still get there, but we'll get there a heck of a lot faster with the help of public works. And we know we've always been able to count on them. We will be able to count on them again tonight, tomorrow, morning. So I'll echo your sentence. Thank you for saying that. So we thought that it might be helpful to spend just a moment or two explaining. Who is Eagle Valley Wildland? Because we're actually asking. That you sign an IGA with Eagle River Fire. And so we understand that might create a little bit of confusion. And probably the best way that I can explain this is to make it very clear that Eagle Valley Wildland is not. It's own entity. It's not an entity. It is a program. It's a collaborative program between Eagle River Fire. Our neighboring jurisdiction, Greater Eagle Fire. And the neighboring jurisdiction to them, which is Gypsum Fire and a county. And we formed this collaboration out of recognition that the wildfire problem up and down the valley. Is ubiquitous to everybody. A fire that starts in gypsum under the right conditions can very easily threaten men. Conversely, a fire that starts in mitter can threaten the rest of the valley under the right conditions, or maybe I should say the, the wrong conditions. And so in recognition of this, we formed Eagle Valley Wildland with Eagle River Fire. Serving as the lead coordinated agency and the fiscal agent. So that's why we're asking you, and in fact, every entity that is signing these IGA's to sign it with Eagle River Fire. Because Eagle Valley Wildland, as I said, is not an entity. Of course, Eagle River Fire as a fire department is local government and therefore can enter into an IGA. So we're excited that you're going to consider signing an IGA again for this year. Um, thank you for budgeting the money that you have included to support the wildfire mitigation. And so with having given that brief introduction, it probably is good time for me to turn it over to Hugh Fairfield Smith. Who, as an employee of Eagle River Fire, as all of. The Eagle Valley Wildland personnel are, they're all employees of Eagle River Fire, but who work. In this collaboration, he can explain to you some of the, the more details about what will be occurring for mitigation. And then uh, also he'll touch on the committee wildfire protection plan. So. Unless there's any questions that I can answer for council members, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to uh. Hugh Fairfield Smith.
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, council. As Chief alluded to, my name is Hugh Fairfield Smith and I'm the fire management officer of Eagle. River Fire and Eagle Valley Wildland. And so together we've, we've worked to take the community approach as Chief was speaking to. A fire in gypsum will impact us. So what we've done is the IGA systems that we are able to leverage funds through grant process. And this is a new style of developing funds through grant processes that. Nobody to our recollection or knowledge has done before. So we've been very successful in leveraging stakeholder funds to get more projects done. We've actually already been successful in leveraging what could be the town Minter and funds to. Easily do twenty thousand dollars worth of projects within the town boundaries of Town of Minter. And then with the partnerships with Eagle County, we can even take that a little bit further. Last year, we grew even more so as we started to partner with the federal government to begin doing projects on federal land. So we were successful in running projects above Shock Cancer Center. Nobody has ever done that before. And what we're seeing is that the US Forest Service is having problems funding the fire and fuel side. Not funding, um, employing people to run these projects. And they were able to pay our salaries and have us run the project. So the partnership is even blossoming to where. It's never been before to where we can go outside of local jurisdiction onto federal lands. The federal land side of things, which is the biggest hurdle that Minter faces, is. Problematic, but we're getting there. It's just a slow process because we have to go through NEPA and do environmental studies to make sure that. What we're doing does not impact the land for the long term in a negative context. And that's okay. But we're just not able to move as fast as we are on state land, like where we did the Dow Junction piece and the Whiskey Creek step, uh, state partial. And on non-federal land and, and what we would refer to as treatable land, town-owned land or HOA land, common spaces. That's for us is treatable land. So. We're working very diligently with our federal partners to be able to start treating and implementing federal land to where it matters most. And we really, we did highlight that in the CWPP and the Highway Twenty-four Corridor in the town of Minter. And carries a high to extreme risk of wildfire. And that's really just due to the topographic features and vegetation that is immediately adjacent. To the town of Minter. What is unique about this is we have the opportunity to change the risk. And we can. And since the CWPP is in place, we now have this leveraging tool. It says we have to do something. And this document has been adopted by the US Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management and the Colorado State Forest Service, along with many other towns. To say this is the need. And so we are placing the Highway Twenty-four Corridor in the town of Minter as our number one priority. To, and along with the town Red Cliff on treatment to start working in and out from federal land. So one of the good things about the intergovernmental agreement is that leveraging of funds. And what we can do now is community chipping days. So we wanna schedule a, a minimum of five and possibly even ten community chipping days. That is something we can do now. And we can work with town staff to get those scheduled. And what I mean by community chipping days. Essentially, residents can just put their slash piles on the side of the road and we'll contract everything and take care of it. And it'll come and be removed for free. And then we'll take it and hopefully turn it into sustainable energy or. Take it to the biomass plant. There's a lot of options we can do with that, but. By entering into this intergovernmental agreement, the town of Minter essentially hits the easy button and allows us. To help you navigate this very complex problem that is wildfire risk reduction. And that's what's so beneficial about partnerships that we have. So with those chipping days, we'll start to reduce the risk. And then we'll start to say we have momentum and we're doing these things throughout the town and we need support on taking that even further. And one other thing that we can do and we're willing to offer is we've actually just hired an additional fire operation specialist under Eagle Valley Wildland. Who is going to be focused solely on the community side of things. Uh, Bear Obitz, who's sitting here and a handful of other, other. Fire operation specialists are very focused on landscape scale projects. This new position, who's staffed by Tim Swanner, is a hundred percent focused on community. And home assessments and helping towns navigate. Design review boards and wildlife urban interface codes. So that's also something we're willing to offer and. Participate in with the town council or the town of Minter, excuse me, to help navigate the difficult thing that is. Starting to enter into wildlife urban interface codes and landscape review. That it's not what most people think. It's not that we're not allowing any trees. It's just about education on proper vegetation around the home. And really educating the public on what we can do to still have trees, but just not. Increase the risk to the community. So we'll offer that service to the town of Minter as well. And of course, the free home assessments are, have been and will continue to be a free service that we'll provide to the community and can be requested. Through EagleValleyWildland.org or RealFire.net. I, I know that was a lot, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have and. We're just thankful for the opportunity to continue this partnership.
Exciting stuff, yeah, thank you. Um, we will start it then in, Kate, you got anything?
Yeah, no questions. Just big appreciation for everything you guys do, so thank you.
I was just wondering if, if you folks had any thoughts about the fire dangers of above. New above-ground high voltage transmission lines.
Sure, we, we, we do, um. There is no doubt that any electrical line. That is below ground is safer than above ground. I think that's. Main siege to the obvious. Statistically though, where do we see the most fires or what? What circumstances do we see the most fires? Is it because of high transmission line failure or is it because you've had something um, more of a service line that has failed? And that's not to say that, well, the, the, the data so far seems to support that it's not. Necessarily the high transmission lines. Um, I don't have a full data set to be able to um. Give you the actual numbers. Uh, but that's not to say that a high transmission line can't start a fire. Uh, again, any transmission line can start a fire. The question becomes one of expense. Is, is the expense of burying the line? And who's responsible for that expense, right, wrong, or indifferent? Is it worth the cost of burying that line? And so that's just the, 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 the truth of it is that any power line can start a fire under the right circumstances. Did I answer your question wrong?
Yeah, um, well, just one, yes, you did. Thank you. But one, one other question would be follow-up. Would be, are fires started by high voltage transmission line, lines larger?
No, so what would start, well, let me, let me, let me back up. Anything that starts a fire, whether it be a transmission line, a campfire that's left out attended, cigarette. Chains that are dragging along the interstate. Is not gonna necessarily have a bearing on the size of the fire. What's gonna have a bearing on the size of the fire are the fuels. The weather, the topography, the condition of the fuels at the time. What is the weather doing at the time? And is it next to an upslope or a downslope or any other type of topographical feature that either lends. To fire spread or on. So a line, a transmission line that breaks and falls and, and, and it causes energized actually causes that ignition. Once that ignition starts, it's really dependent on fuel, weather, topography, which all wildfire depends upon. It varies according to fuel, weather, topography every time. So it's not that it would cause a larger fire. It's just that it may cause a fire like any other possible source of, of ignition.
And if I can just ask one more question, um. I noticed that the only area in the entire county that's considered extreme fire danger. Is um. Of that, what, I guess you, what you call the Highway Twenty-four. And, and that, that's the Minter. Basically, um, I think it's the town of Minter. What makes Minter. So different from the rest of the county?
It's a combination of fuel, weather, topography.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so what happens is you, is you have a condition that we refer to as alignment. And that can happen on a micro scale. It can happen on, on a, on a larger landscape scale where um, the fuel, a kind of fuel. Um, the topography typically upslope. And how the weather is going to impact fire because of topographical features. Is what is going to lend to higher fire danger in certain areas. And then the condition of the fuels over time. The fuels have been impacted. Uh, by disease. Have they been impacted by infestation? Uh, are they just older, more decadent fuels just because of age? What kind of slope are we talking? Is it a slope that faces predominantly the south, in which case it gets far more uh. Uh, solar radiation, therefore tends to dry out more. Fuel type? Or does it face north, in which case it may get a little bit less solar radiation? Um, and then of course, the changing climate. How that, how does that changing climate affect those fuels? And fuels are affected differently. Depending on the fuel type by the change in the climate, however anyone wants to think is caused it. So those are the, the, the contributing factors. And that's why, as Hugh mentioned, when he talks about the very complex. Um, circumstances affecting wildfire. That's why we say it is very complex. Did I answer your question? Any other questions that I can answer?
Mi- Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the fire chief a question.
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm the town attorney, uh, uh, so i- if Minter were. To grow into more of the urban wildland interface in light of the study and the things you've just said. Would you recommend a policy of undergrounding not only main transmission lines? But service lines that go to residences in those areas?
The short answer is, of course, because they're safer. Um, is that feasible? Just as a practical matter? Well, that would have to be answered. Obviously someone other than me, which may be a part of the decision as to whether or not to pursue such a policy. Um, but as I said, certainly, uh, the transmission line that's buried is, is typically gonna be safer. And that's not gonna be affected by the weather or other causes which lead to a, a downed power line. Typically weather, doesn't always happen that way, but most typically weather.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Gusty?
Um, you guys mentioned, first off, thanks for what all you guys do. I appreciate it. You mentioned that, uh. You guys were gonna be able to pick up piles like from residents. Would you have a day, a specific day a week that you do that? Or how would you, how would that process work? Cause when the snow finally melts, probably June this year, I usually try to. Put some of the shrubs up on the hill and, and uh, put them in the dumpster, but you can't get very many in there. And you know, I think that's a great service that you're offering doing that.
It is. The specifics of it's probably a Hugh question. I'll let Hugh answer it.
Well, we would certainly work with town staff to get the message out, but what we've seen be very successful in the past is. Every third Wednesday of the month. So it's just an example. So we would do. May through October, every third Wednesday or maybe two days a month in the height of the summer. So we would have a very definitive day of this is the day that Minter's slash house get repaired.
I think that's a great, you know, uh, service that you're offering there. That's really. For me, where I have a bunch up on the hill, I could probably get it all cleaned up in one year instead of doing it over five, so.
Yeah, and, and that, that's, that is the goal because right now that, that is something we can all do. As we're waiting to push out onto the federal land, which could take a year, could take three, so. Reducing the fuel loading within town as a free services. And we couldn't do that without the support of this council, so thank you.
Thank you. And one other question that you've mentioned that, like you guys are starting to work with the forest service. I know two or three years ago, they were doing a bunch of, I think it was more beetle kill that they were doing up in Piney and they were logging a lot out. And then burning the piles. Are you guys in charge of that now? Or is that still like under the forest service or is that a partnership or?
That's still with the forest service and those were actually timber sales and then slash was just what's left. And they actually finished burning all those piles this year, so. Huge piles are done. We get into some interesting legal situations to where we're not federal employees, so we can't be burn bosses there. But we will go support them and help burn those piles just as they will come help us. But it's just a matter of land jurisdiction of who actually runs those prescribed fires. So the answer is yes, we help, but we don't control those.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, I just was trying to understand, you know, we were contributing seventy-five hundred and then there's, I was looking through some of the projects and things and. Was wondering like just generally like how. Was wondering like just generally like how, what is your like fulfill budget? Backlog of projects mitigation in the town, like what would that general number be for Mintern? And I know that we're connected up and down valley, but I got to imagine there's a list of like interface projects and things both on. You know, public land, private land, what what's fully funded look like?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer because. It it comes with a few parts. If we're just doing things within town. We're expecting anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars to run six to ten shipping days, so that's a. That's a pretty low cost in the grand scheme of things. Right now, we as the Eagle Valley Wildlife Eagle River Fire Protection District, this is countywide excluding Vale. Has twenty-six million dollars worth of shovel-ready projects, those are good to go. It's just a matter of funding. Where we're speaking to the town of Mintern and Highway twenty-four corridor, it gets to be a complex question because. We have not really reached out into that federal land. So in, if we were able to do everything we wanted to do on federal land to fully protect. The town of Mintern and the Highway twenty-four corridor, I think it would be in excess of ten million dollars on the cheap end. But we're talking about years of large-scale fuels projects, so. The tangible things that we can really start to make a change is actually pretty cost-effective. Chipping days are are reasonable. Prescribed fire and and some of the other thinning projects on what could be Vale Resorts Land and and some of those other lands. Very reasonable, we're talking about anywhere from fifteen hundred to six thousand and eight. So it it can be reasonable, but it's just a matter of the scale we desire to take it. And it it could be indefinite in 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 this region unfortunately, so. Apologize for the gray answer, but that's a very difficult answer, yeah. Thank you.
Um, I just had a a question, just to point you on that and then another question, but do you have um. Like a wish list of Mintern, do you have a prior prioritization list? Um, that you've developed um. With that ten million, I guess, like big, big picture and smaller picture.
A a little bit, and we have sent, Chief Bauer and I have sent to the US Forest Service projects that we would like to see accomplished. On this side on US Forest Service land, that does include two of drainage as well. And some of the products around the shooting range to make that a little bit more resilient if there is another ignition at the shooting range. I've designed projects that would encompass Vale Resorts Land and then also con- continuing what is on the state partial. So we are, when you look at our big project maps, it's it's all encompassing. So on the town of Mintern really has very little treatable land, so. We have submitted to the US Forest Service as a request to do a Good Neighbor Authority. Which would basically say we are driving these projects and and that's well over a thousand acres worth of treatment. Outside of available land. There's, I think, what could be some opportunity on Vale Resorts Land and Union Pacific Land of some treatments that we could do soon. We're just trying to understand what those treatments can be as some of these stakeholders are. Kind of difficult to get a hold of, just to be frank, so especially Union Pacific, but we have a very strong partnership with Vale Resorts. So I I think we have opportunity with on their own areas.
Okay, is it is Excel Energy in partnership with you?
We're hoping soon. Um, we have not entered into a partnership with them, but we've I've talked to some of their. Operations folks and they're interested.
Okay.
So.
I just, I I notice when they they do have power lines running through our account and. And the interface and when they go through and chip and and slash, they leave it. And it just all stays there and um I've taken photos of it and. Send it to Michelle and it's like, do they have no requirement to pick up their stuff? I mean, do they just leave it?
They do, and 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 that's what, it's a treatment method to, it's coined or termed lop and scatter, so they're just lopping it down and scattering it. And.
No scattering.
Just piling. Well, yeah. So to hopefully this makes it feel a little bit better, that is our end state. Is they have to treat and maintain their corridors, so we've reached out to Holy Cross Energy and Excel. About taking on the management of those corridors. The reason we are interested in managing those corridors is they could be become. Very useful fuel breaks. So fuel breaks are a tactical advantage that we rely on everywhere. To either slow the fire progression or stop the fire progression altogether. Within a area that there is a power line, which we've treated some down valley just because they fell on available treatable land. Is you widen that a little bit to make it so that if there is ignition from a power source that it has low vegetation to where it wouldn't move. Quickly versus high vegetation where it may have a rapid ignition. So there there is benefit in all of those pieces. We're also working with the US Forest Service. There's wa- there's burbage in the infrastructure bill that would expedite the NEPA process. On established infrastructure. So there's opportunity to treat for us specifically to treat those areas of established infrastructure, which is power lines.
But they, you know, they they have like reported four billion in profits or something years ago, so. They could pay for some of that too, instead of making Eagle Valley Wild.
Yes, uh, we we agree and the Fire Chiefs and myself and our policy group, we've. Had discussions about, there's models in California where the power companies help support staffing. That is one of our goals is to start working towards that as well.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, Hugh, um, pretty exciting programs you got here, um, and the home assessments, um. Uh, I I assume you're just looking at the fueling of the landscape and so forth and materials of the houses built with and those kind of things. Um, and I think it's, it would be, when when do y'all? Do you, can you do that? Do you do that in the winter or do you wait till it melt off?
It's not ideal to do it in the winter because we can't see the vegetation, but if someone had questions about anything on the structure, we can certainly come out and do that.
Okay, because I think it'd be valuable if our citizens, uh. Yeah, I mean, it's a free service and you get some expertise and on your on your property. Um, and and combine that with the fact that you will have chipping days. If you get your assessment before the chipping days start, then if you decide to make changes because of the of your assessment. Um, you would be, that'd be cool if you you cut down what you need to cut down and start growing new things and so forth, does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense and and that's what we would support and encourage and we really want to stress that. When the assessor does come, they're not going to come and tell you to cut down every tree on the property, that's hardly ever that. Might be one, it might be two, but there's no have-tos about it. Most of the time it's just how does fire get into trees or how does it? Move into a structure, so we really focus on ladder fuels and fuel continuity as vegetation approaches your home. And it's just breaking up the fuel continuity or the ladder fuels that would lead to. Structure to structure in my abilities, and those types of things are really important to educate on. So we really, we stress that is it's more of an education piece on little things that you can do to increase your survivability.
And um. They occurred to me that, uh, you know, with our sidewalk projects, if people have. Vegetation in in that uh, in in sidewalks. Uh, if we can make them aware of that and maybe they want to go ahead and take advantage of the chipping days and whack things down. Is something to think about. Um, I do appreciate you, uh, we we had one of your first, I think, or earlier mitigations happened in Mintern around a water plant. Uh, that was what, three years ago, four years ago, so.
Yeah, we created, which I think they're buried now, they're one out there just due to the new infrastructure, so.
Yeah.
As soon as that's in place, we can do another risk assessment and revisit that area. And then, oh yes, that was, that was a successful project, so.
So, uh, maybe we can put that out on our website and email blast from Cindy about that pre-assessments and so forth. Okay, cool. Um, any further questions from the board? Okay, uh, so this is res- resolution number three, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, approving the intergovernmental agreement. Do we have, uh, there's no further question, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number three, series twenty twenty-four, resolution of the Town Council of Town of Mintern, authorizing the town manager. To execute the twenty twenty-four intergovernmental agreement for the support of wildlife fire mitigation. By in between the Eagle River Fire Protection District and the Town of Mintern, Colorado.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Gusty, all in favor?
I am.
I oppose. All right, we're on to resolution number four, series twenty twenty-four, resolution adopting the Eagle County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Um, so I don't know if we're, this is covering the same ground or not, but.
This is actually slightly different and we'd love to be able to take a few minutes to just talk about. The difference in the two and the importance therein, because uh, you'll all remember that back on December the twentieth. We had the opportunity to have Birch Baron, uh, Eagle County, uh, Emergency Operations. Uh, Director of Emergency Operations and Sergeant, um. Tim Comro come from Eagle County Sheriff's Office. The two of them discussed the value of Mintern. Signing on and adopting the Eagle County Emergency Operations Plan and underneath uh, as an appendix to that plan. Is the evacuation plan and one of the things that they really hit home on was that making sure we're all on the same page as we start moving through. Our uh, emergency operations, how we handle emergencies when they come up. And as importantly, how we handle emergencies before they arise. Uh, so with that. Uh, I then had a conversation with uh, Chief Bauer and Hugh about Mintern's role. And uh, wildfire mitigation, which spoke quite a bit to the value of Mintern. You know, communicating with our public and especially with our local residents on what we can do to be prepared. Uh, for wildfire in advance of issues occurring and that being really being the role of the Mintern staff. This uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan being such a key part of the communication piece. On what we can do to be prepared for wildfire in our area. Uh, so their team, uh, the Eagle River Fire Protection District and Wildland under that. Has worked very hard with all of the communities in our region and I don't even know how many additional organizations. To put together uh, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan so that everybody understands the action steps. Uh, that can be taken, where we stand in our risk levels, uh, it really helps to bring everybody together onto the same page. So with that, I think it's a real value that we have this team here tonight. They are very experienced, especially in our area and Hugh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think. And it was a blur to me that day, um, but I think the day of our fire out at the um. At the shooting range back in twenty eighteen that Hugh was in charge.
Kind of, I was, I ran operations, so.
Okay, so when I got there, I had just gotten out of my fishing waders. And the sheriff's office drove me in, uh, and I saw Hugh with walkie-talkies in each ear thinking. Good lord, that guy's in charge, and I thought I'll stay out of his way. Uh, and he really, they all just had such an absolute command on what was happening that day and as your town manager. I couldn't have been more proud of the team that was leading our fire protection. Uh, you know, there were uh, planes above us, there were hotshots driving beside me. Uh, you know, going straight in from Montana, I've never been so happy to see a group of dirty men. Driving into a fire in my whole life, um, and and bless them and and women, they were so brave. Um, but this is really the crew that you want, we have the A-team with us. Uh, and this this plan is a reflection of that, so I just didn't want to miss that piece before. Uh, we talk about this Community Wild- Wildfire Protection Plan, the value and then hopefully the adoption plan, so thank you, Hugh.
Thank you, and you did a fantastic job kicking it up, so I think probably what would be best is just to answer any questions if there are any. But really, what this plan does is it provides a comprehensive countywide. Community wildfire protection plan that outlines key steps to make us more resilient in the face of catastrophic wildfire. And. This is, we feel that this is the cutting edge of what a CWPP is. Because historically, we look at other areas throughout the country and the CWPP is drafted, it's signed and it's put on a shelf. We now have online web-based platforms that will be released soon, they're almost done, that provide real-time risk maps and project maps. That allow us to see the risk change essentially in real time. And it changes, when we do a fuels project, the fire severity changes, which reduces the risk and the long-term. Effects on the landscape. So we've gone at this since the very beginning of, we do not want this to be another document that we slave over and it goes on a shelf forever. This is a living, breathing document that we have planned to amend, either. We've talked about quarterly, but I think realistically every half year we'll we'll reassess, start of the summer and end of the summer. But the things that are in there are tangible, small steps that we were able to accomplish that will. As they accumulate will drastically change how we see and live with wildfire.
Um, any questions on this uh? Resolution?
Good feedback on any part of this, so we.
I think you could either email it to Michelle and she can send it to me or if Michelle's comfortable, you can send it directly to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have one clarification I like to have on the agreement in the first paragraph, um. You have a description of 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 the area, the Mintern area. And this says, at uh, as described herein within and in the areas immediately surrounding Avon's boundaries. And that's the description of Mintern area.
Are you referring to the IGA or the?
This is the uh, intergovernmental agreement with the.
I believe that might be a typographical error.
Okay.
It should reflect the town of Mintern's boundaries.
Okay, okay, so maybe you can, I'm sure Michelle will.
I can update that and extend it tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, I started to read the, read the document, the the big, the big, uh, the big plan and it was a very well organized document, but uh. That would take a couple of weeks for me to go through and remember a damn thing, so. Uh, I gave up, so, but anyway, I'm, we're very happy with the services you, your you folks are rendering. And um, and I'm hoping that uh, anyone that gets word of this, that uh, to sign up for home assessments and. Free chipping, that's that's very cool, especially if it's going to biomass or whatever, that's that's important. Um, okay, uh, there's no other questions, we got a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number four, series. Twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Town, uh, Council of the Town of Mintern, Colorado, adopting the Eagle County Wildland Fire Protection Plan.
Motion by Gusty, second by Lynn. Uh, was it Kate? I'm sorry, thank you, Kate. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? All right.
Thank you for the support.
You bet. We'll be in touch, hopefully we'll, you'll be, we'll give you a lot of business on the assessments.
We'll take it all. Thank you.
Okay, so. Yeah, right. Uh, next, our discussion items, um, then we have, uh. Cross Creek Well Exploration Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm actually going to turn this uh, immediately over. To Bill Berg with Martin and Wood, who oversaw. The project as council approved, uh, this last fall for the um. Uh, exploratory drilling of um, or exploratory testing of wells three and four to understand. Volumetric capacities, uh, Bill has a memo in the council packet. Covering the uh, findings of those exploratory tests. And uh, next steps, just so you all know, um, I had a talk with some of our water team this morning and Bill, I'm sorry you weren't on that call, so you and I need to connect, but. I am looking to try to get the entire water team together uh, for a February seventh water discussion, so we're not looking for any. Uh, direction on this tonight, uh, so that I I would love to just get. Jared available for you all, John Volk available for you all, so that. Any subsidiary questions that should arise from a more holistic water conversation can be answered before direction is given. Uh, but so with that, Bill uh, is here to provide an update on Wells three and four. Thanks, Bill.
Welcome, Bill.
Hello. Thank you for the introduction, excuse me. So back in, gosh, I guess it was in November, we did the testing on. Minton Wells three and four, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review our memo. But the quick takeaways are that. Well, number three is limited by the size of the well or the diameter of it. Where it can only. Fit a pump that's capable of producing a hundred gallons per minute out of it. I guess I should step back a minute, the goal of this testing was to see if these two wells. Could produce a combined two hundred and, no, two hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute each. For a combined four hundred and fifty gallons per minute to serve the proposed new water treatment plant for the city. And one of the concerns of the. Is that the water needs to be considered as groundwater and not under the influence of surface water. And what that means is that when you pump the well, there shouldn't be any surface water. I guess you call it contaminants like bacteria. Fecal coliform, the stuff that's produced by wildlife and other things on the surface. Both of Wells three and four are, have screens both in a shallow interval and a deep interval. So we designed this testing to isolate the lower screen interval. So that we would have a, a better chance of being classified as not under the influence of surface water. As soon as you're under the influence of surface water, the water treatment costs go up. So we first looked at well three and. Due to some uncertainties in the documentation, I weren't sure exactly in the construction on it. Well, it turns out that the well has a diameter such that the biggest pump that will fit in that well. Will only produce a hundred gallons per minute. So even if the aquifer was able to give more. You couldn't get more out of it because you can't fit a bigger pump in it. So that's the limitation on well number three. That. Along with the, the drawdown in the well, when you pump it, it draws down quite a bit. So we think at that location, the aquifer is not going to give up more, much more than about a hundred gallons per minute. Regardless if it's a bigger well or not. Well, four. From previous testing that's been done on it in the past, I don't know, fifteen years or so. It showed very minimal drawdown when it was pumped, which means it has a much greater chance. Of producing the, the two hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute. But what we found on that well was that. Something had happened over time where. My guess is, is that. A boulder, there's lots of boulders in the Cross Creek. Base drainage and in the Eagle Creek drainage, that when you drill a well, it. Removes some of the finer grain materials and over time, maybe enough of that got loosened up so that a boulder. Slid down and dented the well screen, such that half of. The available area inside the well was blocked off. We put a video camera down that well and looked at the screen as best we could because we couldn't get the camera past that. I guess you call it a dent in the screen. But the screen seems to be in decent shape, so the well is still functioning fine right now. The problem is that because of that dent, there cannot be any maintenance done on the screens themselves, so. At some point in the future, they're going to end up being clogged up and that well is going to have to be replaced. So we, we've cleaned it up the best we could, using other methods other than mechanical cleaning. And tested the lower screen and found that. In its current state. Similar to well number three, it produces about a hundred gallons per minute. We had isolated the lower screen from the upper screen, so that all the water during the testing was coming from the lower screen. And we experienced a much more significant drawdown than had been experienced in previous testing on that well. And what that tells us is that the upper screen interval contributes a significant portion of water. To that well. So. Both wells produce about a hundred gallons per minute each. In order to produce more than a hundred gallons per minute. You would need either an additional well or maybe multiple additional wells. To reach that two hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute each. Well floor four is going to have to be replaced at some time due to the. The compromise in the screen, the dent in it, because it's eventually going to clog up. And if you want more water out of well three, then a new well is going to have to be drilled either. In a different location, hoping, you know, hopeful that the aquifer produces more. And or with a larger. Well diameter, a, a larger well allows more water into the well, which will produce more. So I know this wasn't the results we were looking for, but. I think it, and we'll have to talk with this with the rest of, of the group that Michelle just described as gonna happen. In the next few weeks. Is that it may be cost-effective to put additional wells in rather than to. Spend money on increasing the treatment capabilities of the wastewater treatment plant to handle surface water. Basically groundwater costs much less to treat than surface water. So that's, that's the, the quick summary of. The activities that went on and the results that happened, so I'll open up to questions from council.
And your cost estimate to do a well, I'm assuming that's per well, isn't it seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, would you advise replacing the screen on well four for now?
You can't just replace the screen, the whole, they're all welded together, the screen and the blank sections. So the, when you, when you construct a well, it's put together in pieces and it's welded together. So you can't just unscrew a piece of it, the whole well needs to be replaced.
And are, are you recommending that if we, if well four were to get clogged. Completely or if we wanted to replace that well, we not put it in the same location?
The well for location. Produced much better than the well three location. And that's based on the drawdown that was experienced when we were pumping the well, so. If you have less drawdown, let's say the water level goes down ten feet rather than thirty feet. That means it's got more capability to, to be pumped harder, to produce a higher rate. Before that drawdown gets down to the pump, so I like the location of well number four. Where it is, it's just unfortunate that natural causes has compromised that well.
But you said most of the drawdown are, the lack of need for drawdown seem to be coming from the upper. Water filter. Did I understand that right?
Yeah, you, 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 that's a good comprehension, it's, it's not most though. When both screens are contributing, that well can produce way more than two hundred. The lower screen yields one hundred gallons per minute. The upper screen may yield the same amount, may yield a little bit less, but we decided. That it wasn't in the best interest of the town to just. To spend more days testing the upper interval when that well is compromised anyway.
I guess what I'm asking is on well four, are you concerned about. Surface water contamination?
I'm concerned about that in any location. So I, I think that we. Both wells have passed that test in the past, but. Conditions change from year to year, and so if we get a condition where. More surface water. For, you know, whatever natural reason gets brought into that well and it tests positive. Then we trigger the surface water. Regulation. And so the idea is just limited to the lower. Portion of the aquifer, there, there's, there's a, a less conductive clay layer between the upper screen and the lower screen. So I'm confident that the lower screen is gonna pass the surface water criteria. I'm not as confident that it will always pass if we have both screens, the, both the upper and lower. So it becomes a cost benefit analysis in my mind of, of. If you put in multiple wells versus the cost of a surface water treatment system. And, and that's where we need to talk with the rest of the group, because I'm not the treatment guy, so I, I don't know those costs.
Can I ask a question? So recommending. We'll, we'll have to at least. Drill a new well for drill for, for well for it's.
I'd like to call it maintenance of the current well, because that's what our permit with the United States Forest Service allows us to do at that location.
Okay, so maintenance of that current well. So when you maintain the current well and drill a well. I, there's no way to know what the GLEDI is gonna be or what the output is gonna be until you drill it, correct? So you, you can't like drill a well and go, this one's gonna output two twenty-five and it's gonna have no risk of. Of contamination from surface water, so, so if, if we drill that, we're. We're rolling the dice on whether that would be the answer, is that right or is there, is there a way for engineers to?
So, yeah, those are two separate issues, one, one is the, the GLEDI groundwater, the surface. Under the influence of surface water, hang on one second.
Well, well for currently. What you said is that it could definitely output more than two hundred GPM. With the upper screen and the lower screen, but we can't do the upper screen because of the risk of GLEDI.
Right, and the, and the. The way to test to see if it's going to pass or not pass GLEDI. Is, under my understanding. A long process, it takes many, many months to do and. I'm not sure what the expenses of it, but I believe it, you know, it takes the good part of a year to, to do that testing. So we wouldn't even know if it would pass or not until after a lot of that testing is done. Because they do it at all different times of the year, Jared would be better to. Positioned to answer that question, but that's my understanding after talking with him. What I'm saying is that as a hydrogeologist. Because the lower screen interval is separated from the upper screen interval by an. Essentially a non-conductive layer. The chances of, of a GLEDI determination, if we're just withdrawing water from the lower screen are minimal. But if you have the upper that drastically increases the chances of getting a GLEDI determination. Now that's, that's somewhat related to the yield or what the well will produce, more open screen interval. To open to more aquifer is going to give you more water. So if we only have one of those screens rather than both of them, the well's not going to produce as much. But it's kind of a trade-off between. What your well yield is gonna be, what your gallons per minute versus your chances of. Being classified as a GLEDI well.
So you, in your memo, you said that it's estimated that at least two new wells would be required to meet the demand of up to four fifty GPM, which. And, and as Gusty pointed out, seventy-five to eighty-five thousand for each well, but. But we don't know if we drill a well. What we're gonna get, is that correct? I mean, is it kind of like a throwing a dart at a? And then we end up with two new wells, but we still don't have four fifty or? I mean.
Well.
Is that possible? I mean, because that's what it's.
It, it's possible, but that's what you see and, and you're looking at the yield of those two wells. So well number four, if you have both screens going. Will produce a, a lot more than well number three. They're in the same stream system, they're not that far apart from each other, but that's. How quickly geology can change, so no, I can't tell you exactly where the most productive spot is, other than using. Geology and, and. Geomorphology to educate me on where you're more likely to get. A better well yield, but. That's correct, you don't know until you actually drill and complete the well and test it.
Yeah, and, and the, the well yield, as you said, especially for that well four. You said it could be a much greater yield with both screens going, but I, I mean. What I'm reading is that with both screens going, we're at more risk of surface water, which means we have to treat it.
That's right.
Okay, so I'm just like.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot to swallow in this, lots of things to consider. If my opinion, from what I know and, and talking with Jared and, and with, you know, my history is that. The safest. Path forward, if we're gonna go with a groundwater route, is to only screen the bottom intervals. And if it takes two wells or three wells or four wells. How does that cost compare to going from a groundwater treatment system? To a surface water treatment system? And, and I don't know that till I talk with Jared and the group. But it may be you could put in ten wells at the cost that it takes to increase. Your treatment system from a groundwater to a surface water system. And that's, that's what we need to discuss before we present that to council next time.
They're like a. Periodic requirement to test for. Under influence of groundwater, like if well four has previously been tested and came out not. Do you have to retest it every like ten years or something, or is that?
I, I don't know, that's not my area of expertise, that would be Jared.
Jared and John Volk will both be available February seventh at the meeting, and I believe that John Volk will say yes to that question. There is required ongoing testing, I don't know the interval that that's required.
Any other questions from the board? Bill. I'm, I'm thinking timeframe here, let's, let's say the council gave authorization for two wells. Two new ones. And how long it goes, so I, I understand you'll have, once that's, those wells are in, you have to. And how long it goes, so I I understand you'll have, once that's those wells are in, you have to test it for a year, correct?
Not exactly, so. Once the wells are in and operational. That's when the start of the goodie testing can happen. And I don't know the exact timeframe for how long. That goodie testing goes, that's that's a question for John and Jared.
Okay, okay.
But I understand it is it is months. Year, I don't know.
April to October.
Got you, okay. Okay, so um. And uh you, did I understand you correctly when you said, you know, it's, you know, with the only using lower screen tech, uh on the new wells? Um, you you don't really know for sure, but it could be as many as ten wells would be needed to get to the four fifty for two for. Or I did I misunderstand you, I hope?
No, I I was certainly hope it wouldn't take ten wells. We know that. Well, number four. Produces a hundred with just that lower screen. Alright, so if if we get. If every well we put in produces the same way as well for with a hundred gallons per minute. Then five would give you an extra fifty gallons per minute. If one or two of them produce more, then that's four wells. You know, it it's like that, so there's only two wells. In the ground right there, so are they the highest producers? I don't know, we may find that a different location produces a lot more, which reduces the number of wells. But unfortunately, the only way to find that out is to actually drill and complete and test the well.
Okay, so kind of trying to put a timeframe on it is is foolish right now, correct? As far as when when we would have that production, depending on. Depending on, you know, what what you find in the field.
Well, the wells can all be put in. In sequence. It it that depends on. Depends on budget. And availability, but usually if you're gonna have a a drilling crew out there to put in a well. And they can put in two or three and not have to move, they're gonna do that. So as many wells as you want to put in, they'll put in. And that, you know, to put in a well and test it is about a two week process. To give you an idea.
Do we get a bargain on the amount?
Well, the bargain comes in that you don't, you're not paying the. The mobilization fees multiple times.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's the bargain, sorry.
I will ask for their availability because it will absolutely in uh include timelines for uh Water Court.
Right, because each additional would require.
If we were to, yes, if we if the council were to give direction to start explo- exploratory drilling for new wells, which would be. I would look to have an absolute minimum of three, given that we know well four has to be repaired. Uh, so not including the repair of well four, we need at minimum two more and most likely three more, you know. We would then need to get Christie and Susan Ryan involved in the discussion. Both from uh, you know, a water rights and the accounting of how the water rights are done on a monthly and annual basis by Christie. And then to understand from Susan, the amount of time and the process that it would take in Water Court to. Uh, request a alternate point of diversion for our senior rights, since we don't have the ability. To augment our junior rights on Cross Creek.
Could we um could we get some kind of cost estimate of that that included um to that total? Because seventy five day that that looks very attractive when you don't figure in all the attorneys.
And and there's a lot of, there there are other things missing from those numbers. Yes, so uh will our team will get together, um, yes, attorney's fees are always a.
I I'd like to add something.
Pricing on the pumps or anything, that's just putting the wells in.
That's right.
I'd like to add one thing. The, so well number four does not need to be replaced right away. So.
I just wanna say that Bill isn't, and Bill, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but it was actually purposeful. Uh, because Bill isn't sitting in my seat.
Okay.
Which I I'm the one that gets the call when we don't have water service and I love functioning utility, so. The sooner we replace well four, the better in my mind.
Isn't that right, Michelle? That would be maintenance.
Correct.
And that's probably our easiest of of the process.
Bill, and and I only do this because I am so fortunate to have such a comfortable relationship with Bill and and his knowledge. Ability to know what's going on and he's he's far more uh comfortable with. Failing infrastructure than I am, uh, so I would like to replace sooner than later.
And and like, do we, can we even drill more wells, or do they all have to be?
No, 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 we we have, uh, we already have a decreed well field on Cross Creek. The only issue with well four is that it is techni- it is located on Forest Service land. Forest Service will not let us drill any new im- or create any new infrastructure on their land. Which is why it is a maintenance project on current infrastructure.
But if we needed to drill five wells.
On county intern land, yes.
Bill, do you have a sense of how many wells would fit on our well field? So like a max, like we can put twenty three of these things on there.
Oh.
I mean, I like, I don't know. How far apart they have to be and et cetera.
I have not done that type of analysis, so I can't answer that question.
But conceivably, it's more than three.
Yeah, I and I'm just trying to recall the. Uh, the length of the well field, I think it's pretty substantial.
And Bill, we can bring that forward on February seventh because Christie has that mapping as well to show the. Length of the well field and the area that it covers.
I actually did that mapping fifteen years ago.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Yeah, Bill, Bill's knowledge on on. Goes way, way back, perfect, yeah.
As I say, like, oh, boy, that's fifteen years ago, let me think about that one.
Uh, any any other questions for Bill while we got him?
One, would it weren't going any deeper with the wells and having your screens down lower to kind of. Get away from the goodie on the upper string?
No, it's those wells are drilled down to bedrock. So as soon as you go deeper, you're going from. An alluvial unconsolidated, you know, sands and gravels aquifer into a bedrock aquifer. Uh, they'll produce less. Um, it's a different type of well, you can't, you can't. Complete a well where it's screened in two different aquifers. So you can't have an alluvial well, which is what you have, also screened in the bedrock. So those are as deep as they can go.
Okay, the last time you were here too, you said that bedrock has more of a risk of. Running dry than an alluvial, alluvials.
Yeah, I I don't think it's gonna run dry, but it I just don't think they're gonna produce as much. Alluvial wells. Eh, in my experience. It's like an order of magnitude, more water is produced with an alluvial well than a bedrock well. So it would take a lot of bedrock wells and they're deeper and more expensive, so you're you're better off. With the with the alluvial well screened down deep. Especially because you have that clay layer that separates the lower part of the alluvial aquifer from the upper.
And I believe Christie Radaba would say that our water right decree for the well field on Cross Creek is for specifically alluvial wells.
I I think that's right.
Okay, uh, Bill, thank you so much, I we appreciate your time here.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll send off, thank you.
Okay, next item, discussion item is the Gilman disconnection.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this topic stems from the approval of the uh. Battle Mintern uh uh. Resolution to move forward with the diligence period uh approved. September sixth, twenty twenty three. Uh, as part of that approval is the disconnection of the Gilman parcel from the town of Mintern. Since that time, the question has arisen as to if the council is interested in also disconnecting. Roster pile five and what is known as the Rex Flats area. A map has been included in your packet to identify these areas. Uh, Mike Sawyer, uh, Mintern Town Attorney is with us tonight to discuss this in far better detail than I can. Uh, so I will turn this over to him.
Thank you, Michelle. I I I don't think it's a terribly complex issue, um, you know, the the town has limited resources. That it can invest in working with in particular state and federal agencies who have responsibility over the Superfund site. Uh, really what needs to happen is in addition to having a staff point person. You need an environmental consultant and you need an environmental attorney to help guide the town. Uh, on making decisions about uh issues. Implicated by the Superfund site, but also to monitor the progress that's being made both by the. Uh, the implicated party uh and by the federal and state agencies. Eagle County is in a much better position financially uh to have. Those experts on retainer and to be monitoring the situation. Uh, the areas of Rex Flats, Roster Pile Five and and Gilman really are not. Significantly intertwined with the fabric of Mintern. And I think staff's opinion is that uh because these areas really are. More out in the county, they are joined by county lands or lands that are within the county primarily Forest. Service and rural parcels that are are adjacent to them. Uh, that it is in the best interest of the town to see each of those disconnected and to have the county take responsibility for. Being the local contact with Superfund matters. Um, that doesn't mean the town gets completely left out. Uh, you know, the there are areas within the Battle Mountain. Uh, proposed development that do have uh Superfund overlays and that the town will continue to be involved with. But this takes the really the most complex and most contaminated areas outside of the the town's jurisdiction. Um, we have had discussions with. Uh, the town's environmental attorney, um, Polly Jessup at. Law firm of K K and R, uh, she is in agreement that. That there's no real benefit to maintaining these parcels in the town. Uh, and that uh that we're not giving up any jurisdiction that. Would be meaningful in terms of protecting the town's uh interests. So happy to answer any questions, uh, but our recommendation is to. Uh, give notice to Battle Mountain that the disconnection that's going to occur under the settlement agreement will include. Roster pile five uh and uh Rex Flats.
And Mr. Mayor Tim McGuire, representing Battle is here tonight, and he has been the primary point person overseeing. These parcels from the property owner's side in case the council has any questions of Tim.
So, questions from anybody? Gusty?
You guys are okay with adding the Rooster Pile Five and Rex Flats to the disconnect?
Uh, Tim McGuire, one sixty four railroad now, uh, yeah, I guess the, I think if you look at the map, you'll see. That if the settlement does go through, that we're basically just disconnecting everything to the south. We really wouldn't be connected to it anyway, any of the property that we still own and maintain, so it 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 really is cleaner just to. Get it all out in the county. Because it's a natural, it's it's on the other side of Highway twenty four. And in town land would actually be in between our land and that land, so it's it's not really connected anymore, so. It kind of makes sense to just disconnect the bell.
Yeah, question concerns Rex Flats. Because I know under the original um GIM plan, um, that was going to be remediated. Um, and the decision has been made to only remediate O T P. Um, can you um share some insight, any insight into that or any insight into? What it would take to remediate Rex Flats?
Yeah, so Rex Flats is really, aside from the town of Gilman itself, the most contaminated area on the site. And it's very complicated because when. When they did the original cleanup in the nineties, what they did is they cleaned as deep as they could, and then they started to hit groundwater. And they didn't go any deeper. And Rex Flats is very low and it's all right at the groundwater surface, there's wetlands in there. And it was always gonna be extremely, extremely difficult to remediate that site because it's a combination of. Groundwater, wetlands, and low lying land, and if you if you look at any of the. Um, the remaining contamination maps, you'll see Rex Flats is all red and blue, it's covered. Where most of the other areas got fairly cleaned up, Rex Flats really never did. So that's that's the real challenge with cleaning that site. And again, the EPA has said that the site is. You know, it's cleaned enough, it's not contributing to further degradation of the environment today. And as long as, you know, nothing additional happens on it, it should be fine.
And and there is a legal distinction between Rex Flat and the O T P. Ultimately, the cleanup responsibility lies with CBS Viacom. As successor in interest to the mining companies that that produce the pollution. That. It makes practical and economic sense to remediate the O T P through the enlargement of. Um, the or not the enlargement through the construction of Bolt's Lake. With Battle Mountain being a coordinator or a facilitator of that. That's something that Battle is doing kind of of its own accord to make that property better, which. Ultimately, under the settlement benefits the town. But Battle has no independent responsibility to remediate Rex Flat. That again, that is a responsibility of CBS Viacom.
Isn't it, I've I've been reading the. I can't remember any acronym, um, reports from the EPA, isn't it, um? More of a risk to remediate Rex Rex Flats because of the proximity to the Eagle River and the groundwater.
Yeah, exactly.
If they mess with it, they could really mess it up.
Yeah, there's definitely an argument to, if you have a wetland that you just allow over time, even decades, it will naturally attenuate and. And isolate those metals and even remediate itself over time, but if you start getting in there, it's likely to release more contamination. Into the river and some other areas. And again, Rex Flats is right, the contamination goes right up to the river. Where the O T P is different in that the contamination, the majority of it ends at the the road there, it doesn't go right up to the river as close as the Rex Flats area did. So, yeah. Yeah, they're always fishing.
Right past your sides.
So, um, quick question, um. Is this disconnection, do we go ahead and go move forward with it, or does this have to, or does the settlement agreement have to take place first?
No, what we agree to in the agreement is that whether the settlement agreement went forward or not, we were gonna disconnect this land. At the town's desire, so if that's still the town wants to see, we would prepare the disconnection ordinance. And get it to Mike to review, and I think it could be done rather quickly. Because I think we've already prepared a draft ordinance a while ago when we talked about disconnecting Gilman years ago.
Yes, so staff is here to seek direction from council as to whether uh roster pile five and Rex Flats should be included. Uh, in that direction.
And and Michelle, I just wanna say. There's actually. That the parcels aren't named that on our official survey map, there's actually. Four different tracks, it's tracks E. Four different tracks. It's tracks E, F, G, and H. And some of them are little tiny pieces that are subdivided by the railroad, but. Just for clarity, if you see the thing coming in, it's it's gonna refer to tracks. E. F, G, and H. As well as Gilman and Rex Flats.
Uh, so Mike, I reached out to Tim today asking for the the surveys as we had discussed via email. Uh, and so thank you, Tim. It sounds like from a consolidated matter of point, we have those in a different, uh, titled format.
Yes.
Okay.
And the town of Mintern is always named as an interested party in any. Whenever those discussions come up with EPA or CBS Viacom, or now with the county. We we would always get a phone call if there's discussion of any kind of those.
I don't see why not, yeah.
And legally. Um, once it's disconnected, you're still going to own it.
We would still own it.
Um, would you continue to own it into the future?
Unless the county wanted to acquire it from us. Yeah, we will, we will own it until someone else owns it, but yes, and right now there's no one else signing up to own it. So yes, we will own it.
You can put it on a. Free. Free land.
Someone actually acquired Belton a few years ago. From Axleene, so there's people there that will do this.
That was up for sale.
They, yeah, I don't think they knew what they were getting it.
They did not.
Is that part of Mintern?
No, it's in the county as well.
Okay. I'm not for this, let's, let's.
Yeah, so we're asking for direction, just everyone in favor of. Doing roster, Tom and Rex.
Uh, thank you. So I don't know if everyone on Zoom is able to see, but we have unanimous support via a thumbs up motion. For staff, uh, to include, uh, parcels E, F, G, and H. Commonly known as roster pile five and Rex Flats in addition to, uh, the Gilman parcel as part of the disconnection proceedings.
Correct. Hey, next we have future agenda items, uh, as you know, we have quite a quite a bit lined up, but is there anything? Anybody on council that would like to add anything to the future? As far as an agenda. I mean, none, we move on from there. At this point, we will.
We, we went. Back and forth, um, and it's Barbara Bowman, is that her name, the new? C dot. I'm gonna pull up her name. She, she was, is it Bowman? Is she the new, pulling this up, sorry, yeah, Barbara Bowman, who is the new. Um. C dot representative. In Eagle. Or is that? Sorry, I'm pulling up the name of it. Eagle County's Commissioner to the Transportation Commission. Um. Is is now Barbara Bowman. I was wondering if we could get her to come in and address issues along. Twenty-four regarding. Safety and what, you know, they're working on, what levers they can pull, um, with C dot. Looking at, you know, crosswalks and traffic only and things like that. Things that we hear from the citizens a lot. We could reach out to her and see if they could do it.
She leaked the contact and scene.
Wonderful.
Good idea.
So we will now, uh.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry to interrupt, uh. Town Clerk Jay Brunnen is asking if anybody is wanting an update on the petitions for council that have been. Uh, pulled so far. We do have. Until. January twenty-second for people to pull and return their petitions if they are interested in running for a council or mayoral seat. There are four council seats available and one mayoral seat.
How many petitions have been pulled?
Jay, you wanna chime in?
Yeah, Jay, would you like to give us an update?
What? Um. Currently, and this is as it stands now, um, there's the mayor, the Mario race has. Robidas and Hawkeye have pulled petitions and returned them. So there's a run there, um, and then we have five petitions pulled for the council seats. Um, Gusty and Eric Godhealth have both returned their petitions. Brian Rodine, Justin Selbach, and Robert Creasy have pulled petitions, but as of this writing have not returned them. Um, Michelle said, January twenty-second. That is Monday. I've made it very clear that everything needs to be in by Monday. At about four forty-five, five o'clock.
What? And if you guys know that, it's Robert Creasy. If you don't know him. There's the face and the name.
Okay, um.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, okay, so we next we need to, uh, recess into. An executive session. Uh, Mike needed to make a revision to the. The motions, so. That is the language.
I move to go into an executive session with. Legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant. Order, uh, two, four B. To discuss towns' water rights on Cross Creek. Recent administrative decisions and South Water. Court case. Number. Two, zero, 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 CW thirty thirty.
I'm sorry, I got.
Motion by Terry, second by Gusty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Correct. We're off.